Hello, everybody. I'm Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town and Monroe Plan and Zoning Commission. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting. It is September 15th, 2022. It is 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as one.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead with calling up the role. Starting right?
I just got scolded.
Dominic Smiguelino, what's your name?
Dominic Benicio, alternate.
Brian Gordon, Commissioner.
Romaine, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Alter.
Rick Schultz, Star Platter.
So we're going to see.
Senator Cory Kretary.
So I need this one. Thank you, sir. We're going to seat Mr. Paul. All right. So that's one, two, three, four, five. All right, everyone is seated. Next is general public participation. If there's any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission about any subject that's not on any agenda tonight. This is the time to do that. Please let yourselves be known by raising your hand, either in person or online. Anyone that would like to participate in public participations? This is the time. Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing is Exhibition Phil, EFP 2022-01, File 108. This is a continuation from our last meeting, September 1st. Do we have any? We're waiting for something, I think.
No, we have revised plans. So we have a new exhibit. You have the revised plans of funding the owners here. Mike, are you going to be addressing or is your engineer?
I think now you didn't show up, so.
Okay.
So revised plans have been submitted to address the comments. And the applicant is here. He addressed the commission on his proposal.
Do we have the comments?
Yeah.
Oh, that's my resolution.
That's our.
In Street. Are they expression of Phil?
They just had change. Oh, you're looking at the wrong. Oh, yeah, this is the ridge. We're not doing this one yet. We're doing this one.
Ryan, can you share? Because I think the applicant already brought, like, six.
Oh, okay.
You have a mic? So you have the engineers' comments. Oh, I stole the audience.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there were quite a long list. And Mike's address those with the submission that was completed and submitted this week.
Do you have their comments?
Uh, no. Scott did not respond yet on those. So the applicant is here to say that he believes he has fulfilled those. He's hoping that the commission can at least close the hearing. If you want Scott's revised update, you can still close the hearing and take that up at the next meeting.
So all of these comments were addressed?
Yeah.
Okay. The grading necessary for the guide rail along the north side of the driveway? No, that's pending.
He told Scott that we hold it placed on the road edge to prevent any accidents from.
So let's get Scott's revised report, Mr. Chairman, okay?
All right, so then you want to close the hearing tonight?
Yeah, I feel.
Because it's not exactly addressed these issues. Have you seen Scott's report?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, I've talked to Scott about the project. And it was the submission of the latest revised plans. And he can get to those.
Yeah, all the items that were, Scott had recommended.
He did.
Engineer corrected them on the revised plan.
That's. Okay.
So really, there is, there shouldn't be any.
Shouldn't be anything left?
No, there shouldn't be.
All right, then we can close the hearing.
All right, close the hearing, get table action.
So then let's go ahead and see if there's any comment from. I know Ryan had some questions last time. No. Are there any comments or questions? None on my right.
Um, no.
No?
Why are we? What does it matter if we close it or not?
No, because of the timeframe. We got an extension that takes us to.
Yeah, everything's going to be done next meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, the hearing has to close on the 18th of this month. We got an extension. So unless you ask for another extension, you would need to close it to satisfy the state statutes.
I see.
I mean, if Scott comes up with any kind of additional requirements, now I'd be willing to address them at that time.
The commission clearly can close a hearing, especially if there's no comments from the public because those are staff-generated documents.
Right, but then if we close the hearing, then we can't ask him any more questions.
That's right, so now's the time to.
But I'm saying we don't have Scott's report. So if we don't have Scott's report and there's stuff to ask him about, we can't do it if we close the hearing. Correct?
Yes, that's comments, but we don't have the response to the comments.
Correct. So what I'm saying is if we have.
So it's your call. You're absolutely right.
So if we have questions from what Scott is saying, then we can't ask him because it's closed.
No, if we close and basically agree with all of Scott's comments, they have to do it and there's no debate. They wouldn't be able to argue against it.
It wouldn't be a discussion or question.
It would just be, this is what, this goes into our approval and they wouldn't be able to have any say in it.
It's your call.
Right, but I'm just saying that's like we've never done that before.
Yeah.
But it cuts through a lot of red tape by not going for an extension and everything else.
I understand.
Well, we don't really have the choice. It's his choice. He has to decide to.
We definitely have the choice.
Don't we have to close it?
We don't have to close it. He can file for an extension.
He has to file for an extension.
He can file for an extension.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. It's not our choice.
There is a choice. He could file for an extension. I mean, it's up to you. What do you want to do? You want us to close it?
He wants to close it.
You definitely want to close it? At that point, you have no more say after that.
I don't know either way.
When in doubt, keep the hearing open, so.
All I'm trying to give you the opportunity, if something comes back from Scott, to give you a chance. If you don't want that chance, just say, "Close the hearing," and we close it, and then whatever Scott says.
The only thing I have a question on is that Scott had planned, the first plan. We addressed all his issues on the second plan. So I don't know why he would have.
He just didn't write it out.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
But according to Rick, he was okay with it, correct?
But let's, you know, it's only a couple of weeks away, so let's keep it open. Mike, just, you know, stay for the record that you authorized an extension to the.
All right, that's.
To the, what's the date again, Ryan? October 6th. It's already a couple of years.
I'm just giving you the opportunity to.
I appreciate that.
It's really the right way to do it.
Thank you. Sorry that we don't have that. Okay, so go ahead.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we're going to go with the extension route, we're going to extend it and we don't really need to discuss anymore today.
No, but Mike, did you want to state anything to the commissioners? Your feelings? I mean, your anticipations on preparing this site? I mean.
Well, I think pretty much we've addressed all the issues. One was the guardrail, the other was the sight line on 25. The third was the wetlands, the illuminating, the engineer's soil report. So everything is pretty much addressed. I mean, I can't see any kind of curveball coming out of it, so.
All right, good.
But I thought you wanted to explain that you want to start on this right away because you have interested parties in economic development.
Yeah, the thing that this particular place, there's no access to it. There's no, as the landlord, you can't access the property. There's no driveway. Can't get in, can't maintain it, can't maintain any of the COVID blockage that's stayed. Later, he's not repairing it. So there's a lot of issues getting this moving before the weather gets a little too cold and you can't do anything. Even the CLMP, I contacted CLMP. They have guided wires that are on the property that has to be moved because they're illegitimate. They're not correct. So we have to change that. So I think a lot of it is being held up based on the approval from the commission. The state, the power company is saying, well, you got to get something in place before we actually start. And that's why it was a firm commitment. It might be good, but if you don't feel comfortable, then I understand that also. I'm suggesting that if there's something that comes up that is an earth shattering, this is my company. We want to address it at that time. Scott had the plan, so I don't understand why, you know, there's not a communication between the two departments, between Scott and this commission.
I'll be talking to Scott tomorrow and advising you of his position on these items that he raised earlier.
So what do you recommend? Can he get started or not?
What's that?
Can he get started with any?
Oh, you want to wait? You want to wait for Scott's final?
How long is this going to delay?
October 6th.
What is the application load at that point? Is it going to be fit in?
At least first on the agenda, so. Well, can we approve it pending the changes?
Then you'd have to close it.
We have to.
Right.
No, I think the consensus is to continue the hearing. We'll get an extension.
I don't hope that's the consensus. It's certainly what Bruno thinks.
Right.
It doesn't.
Listen, I don't care either way. I'm giving you the opportunity.
Well, I don't want to make the applicant pay a price for the fact that there was, you know, an error on our part.
Two weeks is going to, that much is going to get done in two weeks? I've driven around this town for the last 20 years. I've noticed in two weeks, not a lot gets done. So I'm just saying.
You could start correcting that.
Yeah.
We can extend it.
Yeah. All right, then we're all extended if that's not going to be a hardship. All right, thank you very much. Wait a minute, let's go to the public so we can get that done. Are there any public comments tonight on this applicant in the House? If, please raise your hand. Are there any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand.
No questions.
Hearing none, then we will close the hearing for tonight and keep it open until October 6th. Thank you. Paying anything to pay for it?
It's like we're doing two weeks anyway.
All right, moving on, we have a second public hearing, SCP 2022-04. This is an SCP, I think it's not 1271 Monroe Turnpike. This is also continued from September 1st. Rick, do you have any new exhibits?
The revised plans that all of the commissioners have received.
Hi, this is Ian Eller with J. Edwards and Associates. I would like to be able to share my screen and show you those plans.
Mr. Chairman, that is Exhibit number nine.
Oh, it shouldn't. It should be.
You have two full sets and what the, what supersedes the other?
Yeah, we threw out the other one already.
Should be thrown out.
I don't know, Nicole just.
Look at the dates, please.
Nicole threw some stuff away. I don't know what's going on.
Keeping us work fast.
Nicole is our organizational leader.
Hang on. You're down here.
The interest restricted.
Okay, and who am I giving it to?
Hi, can you hear me? This is Ian Eller.
Yeah. Okay, it'll be coming out shortly.
We're answering that with Willie Nelson.
For the record, my name is Larry Edwards. J. Edwards Associates, recently representing. There was two outstanding items that we had last. One was the commission wanted us to install sidewalks. And the other was we were going to give you a detail of the sign. I think that was the only two outstanding. And the third thing is we had comments from Scott. Then we would call him some comments, so we have a few seconds from him.
Inland wetlands, I think.
The overall.
You're still before inland wetlands, is that right?
What's that?
It's still before inland wetlands?
No, we're all done with that.
You're done with that? All done, yeah.
Here's the last one.
All right.
Okay. On this plan, we have an enlarged plan, but you see the dark shaded area along the upper edge of the roadway? So we're basically including sidewalks from the end of the turnaround all the way down to where the mailboxes are. So that was what the commission was looking for, was sidewalks. So that is the extent of what we've included in it. So that, I think, addresses concerns of both your commission and can Scott's comments. We're not doing it along the road because the commission said that was not necessary. And so that answers item number one. If you wanted to walk inside, why not?
Is that the correct one, Larry?
No, keep going. All the way, there's one that has sign details on the fourth end. No, keep going.
Oh, yeah.
It's the last page.
Last page.
There you go. So this is our detail of the sign. Of course, it'll be five departments of the town relations, but. This is the detail of that.
What's good to me?
That's the last, I think it was the two comments that you had. I think we've addressed both of those.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, do you have Scott's, please, revised report?
All right, so you addressed the sideline. You addressed the creation of the basin number one, site and the bond. All right, so then let's go to the commissioners for comments. On my right. That's you done. Any comments?
No, not at all.
No, we addressed all my concerns.
I'm made good.
I'm good.
Also.
Thank you for addressing those two questions and then for the brush.
All right, we'll give the applicant more chance. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on this application, please raise your hand. Any members of the public tonight that would like to address the commission on this application, please raise your hands. Hearing none, we'll go, anything from staff?
Rick? Thomas, Chairman?
I will go back to the applicant. Would you like to? Close the hearing. Okay, then we will be allowed to close the hearing. Thank you. Moving along through SCP 2022-06, File Number 1646A. I have a letter from Attorney Russo requesting that the public hearing be opened and continued till the next regularly scheduled meeting. Therefore, we're going to open, we have opened this hearing, and now we will close it until October 6th.
I got a, no, no, no. I got to read the calls.
Yep.
We have, oh, it's not, we have to actually. I got it right here.
All right.
Plan and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut. Notice of public hearing to be held September 15th, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, September 15th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be a hybrid Zoom meeting with limited in-person attendees, actually no longer limited, sorry, with in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2022-06, File Number 1646A, 375 Springfield Road, AKA 143 Purdy Hill Road. Special exception permit application for proposed construction of a single-story mixed-use facility located at 375 Springfield Road, AKA 143 Purdy Hill Road. LOR, accessory map, 014 lot 045, Stepney LLC. Owner, P L Companies, Inc., representative. Notice was published in voices twice, Wednesday, August 31st, and Wednesday, September 7th.
Hey, Rick, do you?
And Mr. Chairman, Exhibit One, application submission. Exhibit Two, return of certified letters. Exhibit Three, town engineer's report. Exhibit Four, architectural review board letter.
Okay, so we'll continue this to October 6th. October 6th, this hearing is closed, continued. All right, we're going to move on to subdivision and site development plan review. We have SCP 2022-01754 Main Street Outdoor Storage. Rick, do you have exhibits?
Mr. Chairman, Exhibit Number One, application submission. And that is all. We are still awaiting inland wetlands action and the town engineer's report. Mary Blackburn is here tonight. Just to quickly go over the submission, this will be continued to the. It will be the second meeting in October. Ryan, do you have that date? Because wetlands is after the 6th.
The 20th.
Over.
20th.
This will be continued to the October 20th insofar as wetlands continue their review.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Blackburn, can you hear me?
You're muted.
We can't hear you.
There we go. Good evening. Can you hear me now?
All right, go ahead.
For the record, my name is Mary Blackburn. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with solely engineering offices here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. I will just, as Rick said, we're pending, we're still in with inland wetlands, so I can just kind of go over what the proposal is. I think it was a little unclear on the plan, actually what's being proposed. So I have some aerial images to show. Could I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So the application is for Stone Farm at 754 Main Street. It's a site development plan for outdoor storage. Just to give you some history, the Stone Farm actually moved to this site in 2016, I believe it was, about seven years ago. We got approvals then, and since then, his business is continuing to grow. And he's looking for some additional outdoor storage space. To give you an idea, here is the site on Main Street. This is the aerial. So here's the building where their offices are. They currently have some allowed outdoor storage in the back paved area here. And these are the types of materials that they reclaim. They're granite blocks and steps from bridges and old buildings that got demolished. They're quite large. They vary in size. And it all depends kind of on what projects are being taken down and what he finds as to what they're storing at any given time. But they're all granite and natural materials and boulders and some limestone and bluestone. So this is the site. You can see the wetlands in the, in blue, in the upwind review area, in turquoise. I'm going to zoom in kind of on the area where we're proposing. This is the existing approved limits of the outdoor storage. So in the yellow area that I have outlined here, this is where he'd like to propose outdoor storage on existing paved areas and in parking. We are actually overparked on this site. He has 106 parking spaces. And with this additional outdoor storage, he would have 73 parking spaces, only required to have 63. So he'd still be overparked by 10. Truck turning still works. There's a loading dock in the back. The trucks can come in. We ran the truck turning. He is currently storing and staging some material in some of these areas. And that's kind of part of the application here is to get that approved and working. He'd also like to do some additional outdoor storage. This is kind of an existing meadow field area in the pink here and here. And this is like a lawn area where he'd like to store some of those large, you know, granite materials you saw kind of in the pictures. But it would just be on the grass. He's not proposing any clearing or grading in these areas. And then this is the wooded area where he'd like to store some materials, like in and around the trees. Again, no grading or clearing proposed in there. And this is the last area. It's an orange down here. It's a big lawn area. And he would like to, actually, he had proposed milling, but we, talking to inland wetlands last night, they would prefer to see something like process or gravel. And the owner is on board with doing that. We've also provided boulders. This is the on-center at the limits of all the outdoor storage. And then we proposed basins in three areas to treat any of the runoff before it goes into the wetlands. But really, that's the limit of the grading. It's just in the basin areas and some minor grading in here, but this is very flat already. grading in here, but this is very flat already. And then again, these are the materials and how he's picturing storing them. So we are proposing with the existing storage and the proposed areas, we got twenty percent uh, of the lot area for outdoor storage and in this zone, forty percent is permitted. So with that, um, you know, it's gonna get continued, but I kind of wanted to give you a background on, on what he was proposing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm glad you're getting rid of the millings.
Yes.
Official application looked horrible.
So, yeah, I think we would actually, and the reason we did that was I don't believe gravel is permitted as a, a surface for outdoor storage, but millings are, so that was really why we did that. Um, but, you know, I believe you can grant permission to allow us to have, um, to have process or gravel as a surface treatment.
So you plan on doing some of this storage or just right on the grass?
Yeah, kind of as you see in these, uh, as you see in these pictures, like some will be on pallets, some will be on the grass, and the whole area won't be kind of inundated with all of this material. It's just that the materials he gets vary in size and quantity depending on the project. And he needed the kind of flexibility to be able to accommodate different sizes of material and, and different ways of storing them. So that's kind of why we just showed the overall area that he was planning. And he's kind of planning for the future too. He's not just gonna, you know, fill up all of these areas at once. He just wanted to be able to have the flexibility in the future and not have to come back, um, when he wants to expand.
All right, well, um, let's go with the questions from the commissioners. Dominic.
Um, no questions. Thank you.
I didn't hear about the millings. She taking them off or she spreading?
No millings and only gravel in the lower pink area that she's showing.
Thank you.
The rest just grass.
Everything else, I'm okay.
Um, so these get stored and then what happens with these big rocks?
They sell them.
Just asshole.
He stores them as they come in from jobs that are being reclaimed and then, um, he has a large network of, uh, they get installed in like houses where they're doing either granite steps or granite driveways.
That's pretty cool.
And he brings in like, so he brings in like high-end clients who are buying these materials to come and look, uh, and pick out their stone.
All right. Thank you. I don't know.
I don't know. I actually don't have an issue with it. I just think it's, it's funny. It's gonna be like a scavenger hunt where they're gonna have stuff up against trees.
On Rose Stonehenge.
Go, go, go into the, go into lot number two and look around and you get all this other stuff. Nah, I'm, I'm good with it, it's fine.
Um, so there's only gonna be natural materials stored, period?
Correct. This is granite, limestone, boulders, um, just natural materials, nothing concrete or, or anything like that. They're all just reclaimed, kind of high-end.
And, you know, piggybacking on Lance's comment, no processing is happening on the site with, with any of these stones? This is all just getting brought in and sold?
Yes, for this application, so they do have a warehouse inside, um, where they have other items like fire pits and, and things that they sell, um, but that is all inside the facility. And that's kind of what they existing store out in the parking area currently.
Do they plan on lighting any of these areas?
No, they don't. It's just, uh, kind of, hey.
That's all I have.
Those are my two questions, so no further questions for me.
All right, um, what's on? Okay, um, well, let's go to the.
No, it's not a public. Yeah, we're good.
Just us. Well, it's a little unconventional, but, um, seems like it would work. I don't think you'd be tearing up the, not gonna be a lot of in and out with this. It's gonna be in and then it's gonna be out. So I don't see tearing up the grass or destroying the landscaping. So I'm okay with it also. Rick, any staff comments?
No, uh, because of the, uh, quantity of the wetlands on the property, everything is regulated because it's within one hundred feet. And that's why they said, uh, they prefer not to have the buildings, although we just passed a regs that do a lot of that.
Well, we prefer not to have them also.
That's their call. And, uh, well, let's just go into the site. Wetlands is gonna do a field trip. And I think what they're gonna suggest is to try to consolidate it because you see the map where it's all spread out and recommend try to consolidate it into areas that are less sensitive than others.
Okay.
It was pretty straightforward.
All right, then, um.
So we'll wait for wetlands action and then bring it before.
Continue this, okay. Thank you very much, Mary. We'll continue until we hear back from you.
Mary, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
We had a technicality last night. How did you get off?
Huh?
Remember the technicality we had with wetlands?
Oh, yes. Uh, so I just stopped sharing my screen.
You hit stop?
Yeah, I just hit stop, so.
Yeah. I think the individual didn't do that, and that's what the cause was, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we had a five-minute pause last night, it was like hours.
So moving on, we have deliberations, determinations. We don't have anything we can deliberate on, I don't think, tonight, everything is.
Oh, yes, you do.
What do we have?
Uh, I mean, I, I need to get a consensus on the, uh, multi, uh, age restricted. He pulls the hearing.
Close that. Oh, all right. You want to deliberate?
I need to get a consensus on, to write a favorable or unfavorable resolution.
All right, so who is up? Nicole, you're on this one, right?
Yes.
The deliberations, all right. Any questions or comments? What do you think?
I mean, I like that they, uh, are doing the individual septic tanks. I know that kind of area has had some, or the neighbors have had some serious septic issues, so it definitely seems like a smarter idea to do the smaller units, uh, easier to maintain and, uh, you know, prevent negative effects with that. They put the sidewalks in, uh, down to the mailbox, so that's good. You know, my only concern was the possible blasting in that corner. They said it would be very limited. The neighbors that were here last time seemed to be okay with it being very limited, um, to an extent, so I'd be, uh, okay with being a favorable approval.
Me too. Ryan, Ryan took all my questions. Go ahead.
I'm a fan of the new plan and I think it's better designed for the wetlands laden area and, uh, I'm in favor.
I really like that they put the sidewalks in, the sign. They do just, Rick, I know we talked last time, I'd like to talk in the future about occupancy restrictions in the ARR. That's my only concern with the three bedrooms here, that we could have some high occupancy in those houses.
Yeah, that would go with the, uh, resolution.
All right, then we want to prepare it. Resolution?
Yeah, favorable, uh, resolution with the, uh, conditions.
All right, do we have anything else? Minutes, right? But we can, no, I mean, as far as deliberations.
Everyone receives two, uh.
We have minutes? Minutes, yes.
So you need to view those first.
So let's see, we'll start with the August fourth. Uh, the August fourth, town of Monroe, planning and zoning regular meeting minutes. I need a, uh, motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the August fourth minutes.
A motion need a second.
A second.
Motion and a second. Uh, discussion. Any changes? Well, we're good the way it is. You won't need a vote for it, though. Uh, okay. You don't need to seat anybody for it. No changes, I'll call the all, starting with, uh, I see, uh, Dominic. Smir.
Uh, yes.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes. I didn't think I was voting.
Call two. All right.
He's not voting.
Passed.
Yeah, you were seated that day. I was, I can't.
Oh, I see.
Second.
He was there, so the seated one.
At the, um, town of Monroe, planning and zoning commission, minutes of the regular meeting of September the first. Need a motion to accept the minutes as drafted?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September first.
Motion, I need a second motion, a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Everyone has the minutes, everyone's seen it. So are there any comments or changes to the minutes? If not, all the world, this is, um, both towns. All the world standing, everyone included.
Yes.
Smir, you know, yes.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Nicole.
Nicole, yes.
Okay, passed. So we've approved both sets of minutes. Okay. Actually, there is a, a application before inland wetlands that everybody should take a look at. It's gonna eventually get to us, well, Bori Ridge. It's another big one. So if you can, you get online, take a look at it. Inland wetlands, it's gonna be there for a while. But, uh, digest. Anyway, uh, Rick, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I have two matters, Mr. Chairman.
You're up.
Um, we, we are having our last interview, uh, tomorrow with the, uh, Z E O, wetlands agent candidate. And we anticipate selecting them, uh, early next week. So that will be, uh, uh, something that we look forward to.
What are the requirements for that?
Uh, for zoning, uh, CASIO certification. And for the wetlands, you have DEEP certification. DEEP is you can go online and get certified by, uh, you know, reviewing the classes. It's pretty straightforward. CASIO is a lot more complicated and pretty much, uh, a problem in the state of Connecticut. You have to first be employed for three years before you can start taking the classes and then you take the test. Commission knows we have a hundred and sixty-nine municipalities in this state. We have less than half of, uh, certified, uh, zoning enforcement officials. So, uh, something's gotta give. It's just like, uh, as you recall, at cursing, you don't have to do the four-year, you can go to a community college and get your RN. Uh, I've been trying to reach CASIO and, and explain to them the, the urgency. Also, the, the, the state passed a bill that requires all zoning enforcement officials be certified by January of next year. That is not gonna happen, obviously. So.
Has there been any talk of it or?
No, there's no talk at their level and I've been trying to reach out to the officers of CASIO. And they, they know they have a problem, just like we have a problem with.
Because of COVID or?
Well, it's a combination of everything. Uh, a lot of retirees, you know, the ba, the baby boomers. So it's a, it's a real issue. Uh, all of the candidates are not, uh, CASIO certified. All of the candid, uh, candidates did, however, go online to DEEP for the wetlands part.
Okay. So they'll have a year to get certified.
So I'll, I'll keep you, uh, updated on that. Something's gotta give. Also too, Mr. Chairman, we need to have another zoning regulations subcommittee. Uh, I'm recommending September twenty-sixth. Does that, uh, work with everyone?
September twenty-sixth.
One day.
It's Russian song.
It's Russian song.
I'm not sure. And I, I, you know, that's your call.
I'm okay with it. Yeah. And what's that going to be about?
Uh, we have a couple of, uh, I have to put together the regulations for the, uh, accessory dwelling units in the R three. The gentleman that addressed the, uh, uh, commission, uh, the family is in urgent need. The wife is expecting, he wants to start building. So, uh, we, we have to put that out of the October sixth meeting. So I want you to feel comfortable with the regulation.
Okay. All good for them?
Sure. Then we'll have some, uh, minor issues that we have a couple of requests for accessory dwelling units, uh, Route thirty-four. And as staff indicated, the overlay district requires fifteen acres. Remember, we talked about, uh, reducing it to satisfy. So we do have some scattered, uh, two-story dwellings on Route thirty-four, you know, where Monroe Pizza is. And, uh, they are interested and, uh, obviously that's something we want to, uh, encourage, you know, the apartments. So, uh, that'll be brought up as well, too.
Five thirty-one.
Five thirty.
Let Leanne.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have anything else to report. Anyone else have anything else to report? But then, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, man.
Motion to adjourn. Got the motion, it needs a second. And now we are adjourned, it is seven forty-eight.